All right, please stand for the pledge.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who's reading? Collins.
Request to withdraw specific items from consensus items.
Second.
There's nothing to withdraw.
Nothing, okay. I move that the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum A through U.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. And then, bus drivers. Do we have bus drivers? No, we have some. Of all the bus drivers, how many bus drivers are here? Okay, cool.
Wonderful.
So, this idea came from Paul to recognize the bus drivers here in the district because I think everyone knows what type of winter we had and how fortunate we were. One, not to have an accident, and two, to have bus drivers that live here in the district, are employed here by the district, and certainly know the roads and the families and have been able to get our children here to the district and back home safely. So, it certainly, I'm sure, wasn't easy, and we're very lucky to have our own transportation department. So, I also would like to thank Paul for coming up with the idea. So, if the bus drivers who are here, if they could come forward so they can get their recognition.
Paul, you want to name it?
Oh, we called it the White Knuckle Award for the hours that they spent grasping the steering wheel.
Thank you. Thank you, Drew.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wherever you guys want to be. Brooke's a little close.
Scott.
As I like to say, act like you like a joke, again.
Okay, well, thank Doug for sending this to my family for my wedding. All right, one more?
Okay, any statements from individuals? Public statements?
Two minutes. They come up to the podium.
I'm like the best. I'm a bus driver for the district. I recently found out about a layoff of a mechanic we get, and I just, I kind of want to, I know we've got other issues coming tonight with another mechanic that is resigning. I just, you know, we just got an award for white knuckle driving. These mechanics, not only are mechanics, but they drive all the time. I mean, we've got one mechanic that's there that not only drives, he works on the equipment, files the paperwork, and even works as dispatcher in the office, one D P. Rick gets all the buses ready for V O T, which every bus in the fleet has to go through twice a year. Mark, with the aging fleet we have, Mark has to do all the bodywork on these buses. He's been painting the doors, the rusted pieces on them, and putting them back together. I hate to see him go down to two. It could be a safety issue also because of the fact that you get two people in the garage, if one of them gets called out. This is heavy equipment they're working on. I had a brother who works on heavy equipment, and one time a jack slipped and it fell down on his hand. With nobody in that garage to help the person out, it's just, I know we're, the budgets are tight and, you know, it's tough finding dimes and nickels to pay this, but I hate to see it short-staffed there because they really do, there are lifeline out there too. They have to take buses out when we're stuck in turnaround or something. They're the guys that jump in a bus and come and rescue us, the kids, and pull the other ones out, you know, and so I would just, as we go forward, just try and think maybe to keep them staffed, not short-staffing too much. They're good guys, so appreciate them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Betsy McDonald, parent in the district. I recently found out about the decision to eliminate the REACH program, and so that's why I'm here. And while I absolutely understand the inherent difficulties that are involved in the choices related to constructing a balanced budget, I do believe that eliminating the REACH program is a poor decision. I am very disheartened by this decision and really have to question the thought process that underlies it. The REACH program specifically encourages the development of critical thought and deeper conceptual understanding, and is the only program in the district that focuses on the development of creative thought, the kind of thought that fuels entrepreneurs and inventors. Intelligence and talent and creativity are needs that must be nurtured in order for them to grow and reach their full potential. Just as students with learning disabilities are rightly provided with special instruction to help them develop their abilities, so too do those children who are identified for REACH rightly deserve special instruction. These children also have learning needs and require special instruction to grow. Why not offer a learning environment that engages these children as well? Why not promote an educational culture that develops all children's gifts? Mrs. Lavin is an outstanding teacher who has advanced training and education in the area of teaching students who benefit from the REACH program. While we have many outstanding teachers in this district, she is the one that has the additional skills, strategies, and techniques that are especially designed for students in REACH. She creates a notably more satisfying learning environment for over 100 students in just two days a week. I think that's quite a bargain. This is an environment that she creates that challenges these students, that truly stimulates their minds, that makes them want to keep learning, that teaches them that not everything comes easily, and to be prepared to work as greater challenges come in their life, that there is more to education than worksheets and memorization and copying other writers' words. All children have distinct and unique qualities that deserve to be nurtured in order to grow. Adults who have a history of unrecognized and underdeveloped potential is a very sad thing to witness. I see it every day in my work, and it is horrible. Please do not make the mistake of overlooking this group of children. I urge you as strongly as I possibly can to reconsider your decision and to not dismiss the necessity of the REACH program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jen, head of the parent teacher. Basically, here on behalf of, once again, the musical. I was called up by Jeff and let know that we were on the docket, just like everybody else, to get slashed, and the first words out of my mouth, and I went, well, you know what? I would rather that oneie come out of our club than come out of a teacher's salary. I mean, that's just the fact of it. However, what really happened is we found out later that we were slashed another 30%. Now, 30% for us is huge. It's huge. I already, as one person with my parents, raised over $18,000 a year to keep the show afloat. That includes the $3,000 that we've already turned over back to the school district in salaries and donations, because we just paid for two more microphones, as well as things like the $3,000 that we have to pay just to get the rights for the show in the first place. Okay, because we do not control. So, I personally, as one person with these parents, raised $18,000 already. Now, we're being told that we have to raise a third more on top of that. I'm quite lucky. I don't know how much more money one person and one club can raise. And we've gone out of our way to make this club financially secure. At the end of every year in July, I have in place all of the money for the next year's show, because just like you have to run a budget, I have to run a budget. So, this big fund that already seems to be, we have all this money, that is all the money for the next year. I have to fund it for previous year. That's the money for the sets, the costumes, the microphones, the supplies, the batteries, all the stuff that we are not provided by the district. We have to do all of that. I'm not sitting here saying I won't raise this money. I'm honestly saying I can. I mean, Jeff will vouch. I live in this building. So do my parents, so do my kids. I mean, we are here every single weekend. I have workers here making 80 full baskets, 10 Saturdays in a row. So, how do I go back to these parents and tell them, you're losing another 30%? Especially when, you know, we've lost over the years already. We are ready before this. We're turning over salaries. We have seven positions that we fund already on top of what you're asking us to do now. In all honesty, once the word started getting around, I'll tell you flat out, the kids are pretty devastated, because they kind of feel like they're being told that their activity isn't as important as these other activities by being told that you're going to have three times the reduction of the other clubs. Basically, I was going to read this whole thing, but I'm just not, because that's the fact of the matter, and that's what it is. And I'm telling you flat out, I, as one person, cannot do this. And if you value this activity the way that the community does, and you know what the community does, then you'll consider, you'll continue to fund these salaries. Because as an adult being forced to fundraise by your own stipend, that kind of causes a lot of conflict to me, because I'm asking students to go fundraise money to pay me. And I just really ethically have a real hard time with that. Honestly, our position should be funded just the way everybody else is, so we're not having this conflict. And like I said, the community supports this show. They do. They come out in droves, and it's not as simple as raising ticket prices. I went and did a little bit of math. I would have to more than double the ticket prices on the community members to fund the money that we are now missing. And it's not as simple as that, because the company that licenses the musical takes 25% to 30% out of our profits for the rights to lead this program. So, I literally would be charging the highest ticket prices in Western Europe, $14, $15, $16. And contrary to what has been said at some of these other meetings, we do not spend an obscene amount of money. I cost my salary, costs the district per kid $49. $49. When you add all the positions up, believe we estimate it's around $165 per kid, because I have 120 kids that participate in this program, and we are commensurate with the areas schools around us. And in routine, we have 40 more kids in our show than Orchard Park and Hamburg. We do. And we put on one of the best rundown shows in the entire area. We're back in the Kennies for the fourth time. That's huge. That's like going to playoffs. So, in all honesty, I just can't do this. The kids can't keep doing this. All of this money comes out of those families' pockets, and that's, that's really unfair to tell them that even all the hard work that they do and the weekends and the weeks that we are here till 10 o'clock at night doing this stuff, that they're not going to be funded. And even though they've lost before, and no other groups have lost before, we've never gotten the money that we've lost back. We lost our supply line 10 years ago. That's why we have to raise all this money. And that money sits in there from July to September, and it starts being spent out again. And then, when the money comes back in, back into the musical, comes back in for the tickets, and the five different fundraisers that we do, that's the money for next year's show. There is no slush fund sitting there with thousands and thousands of dollars. We make a profit, maybe some years, $1,200, maybe $1,500. I just turned over to the business office $1,300 to purchase microphones at the donation in the school. That's probably my entire profit for this year, although all the bills are not paid. Honestly, I just have to ask that you reconsider that and put some of that money back in, because I cannot find a way to raise $25,000, $26,000, $27,000. And if I can cut off a penny easier, because I cannot have volunteers do any of the jobs in the contract. It's against contract. I cannot reduce the pay for that. You can't have a show without a choreographer or somebody to direct the pit. So, there's really no, there's really no option. I'm caught up at the knees in this situation. So, I can't raise any more money, and I can't cut salaries, and I can't have volunteers. There's, I'm hamstrung. There's absolutely at this point, nothing I can do. So, I'm just hoping and pleading that this program, which is renowned across the counties, does not take it no further. The community doesn't want that. We don't want that. Our kids don't want that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Katie Johnson Klein. I'm a parent of a seventh grader and a third grader. My son was in REACH a few years ago, and I'm just, I don't want to very briefly speak because I wasn't even planning on speaking. I did write to each one of you in support of the REACH program. I did get one response back, and I was kind of disheartened by the response, because I was told that the teachers in the classroom can take up the slack for the REACH program. And I seriously doubt that the teachers in the classroom can in any way take up the slack for the REACH program, mainly because, well, there's a couple of reasons. One is time. I know with the new state standards, there is no time for any kind of gifted program in the regular classroom. And it isn't just an accelerated program that we're looking for in the REACH program. What we're looking for is differentiated education for these children that are gifted. Oftentimes, when a child is gifted, they are very good in one or two aspects. They are very lacking in many other aspects. And the REACH program allows them to see what they are differentiated, what they are successful at, but also how to grow and develop and become stronger in the areas they lack in. Without that knowledge, they often go on in education and feel misplaced. They feel lost. My son is very introverted, and in the REACH program, they did a whole lesson on extroverted and introverted, teaching them what the qualities are for both of those aspects of people. Often, extroverts, especially in a regular setting, are the ones that excel. They're the ones that look like they're the acceptable ones, and if you are an introvert, you're not acceptable, and you do not succeed. So, when my son Sean would have gotten up into high school, I highly doubt he would have been as successful as he is right now. He is carrying around a 95, 96% average in seventh grade. Very happy with that. But I think it is because of the lessons he learned in REACH to see what he was good at and how to build on his weaknesses. And so, I feel that there is no way a regular classroom teacher, again, could make up for those lessons, and so I really hope that the REACH program won't be cut, because I think we can't make up for those losses.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, new business. Resignations. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of teacher aide Sheila Sikow be accepted effective April 22, 2014.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of family and consumer science teacher Diane McHale be accepted effective June 30, 2014. The Board of Education and Administration wished to thank Mrs. McHale for her nine years of service to Eden Central School District.
Second.
Discussion.
Is Diane here?
She's here.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of auto mechanic crew chief Daniel Ricotta be accepted effective April 30, 2014. The Board of Education and Administration wished to thank Mr. Ricotta for his service to Eden Central School District.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the layoff of bus attendant Judy Gustaz Stowe be approved effective March 26, 2014. Mrs. Gustaz Stowe will be on a two-year recall effective March 26, 2014 through March 25, 2016.
Second.
Discussion.
Just that I'd like to let the board know that Mrs. Gustaz Stowe does not have a student to oversee anymore, which is, or to drive anymore as well, so that's why the school doesn't need the attendant.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Appointments. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Joseph Vella be appointed as an extended leave substitute social studies teacher effective April 23, 2014 through June 30, 2014. Salary is $95 per day.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Is Joseph here today? Okay.
What's he teaching?
Social studies.
He is the replacement for Mary Beth Sweeney, who took the administrative position in West Seneca.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Sheila Sikow be appointed as an extended leave substitute special education teacher effective April 23, 2014 through June 30, 2014. Salary is $95 per day.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the attached resolution be approved authorizing Eden Central School District to participate with other school districts in Erie two BOSIs in the joint bidding of items listed in the attachment.
Second.
Discussion.
And just to let everyone know, this is the typical BOSIs every year. It does come up with a list of supplies for us to order from, so it could be anything from custodial supplies, art supplies, music supplies, the general supplies which we order throughout the year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education of the Eden Central School District cast one vote for six of the following candidates for the BOSIs Board of Education. Mr. Thomas DiJoo, Mr. Thomas Fenton, Mr. David Lowry, Mrs. Christine Schnars, Mr. Richard Vogon, Mr. Sean Whitman.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone? Well, I guess we can vote for all six, or vote for none of them.
What you need them to say or do?
If you're going to vote for all six, fine. If you just want to pick a few of them, that's fine too. I just need to know who you're voting for.
They're all up for election, so there's no, there's no opposing.
You could, is no opposing?
I guess all six.
Yeah.
All six. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education of the Eden Central School District, at a public meeting held on April 22, 2014, hereby adopts a resolution approving the 2014-2015 tentative BOSIs administrative budget in the amount of $2,852,064.
Second.
Discussion.
Just to point out, this is not our budget that we have services through BOSIs. This is their administrative budget, totally separate from us.
All in favor?
Where was this compared to last year's? Is it up, down, the same?
Down.
There you go.
Same.
I thought it was down.
No, the next one's down.
Oh, okay.
Good for you, Mrs. Thomas Sullow.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2013-2014 commitment for BOSIs services be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion.
Now, this is the one, Mike, that you are thinking of, and this is our service commitment to BOSIs, and just what you said is absolutely correct. Our commitments are down for the coming year. Last year, we were at $2,123. This year, we're at $1,990, so we're about $130,000 lower. And again, as a direct result of two things. Number one, PPS is doing a wonderful job in bringing students back whenever possible. And number two, quite honestly, a belt tightening. With the tighter budget, there are just some things we're not able to do without, and so we had to make some choices.
What are some of the, is there anything, what are we doing without?
Just small services here and there which add up. For example, and I like to use this when we've talked about this often, is when Barbara asks questions about certification and all that, instead of $4,500, we've allowed her one question for $450. And in fact, BOSIs even called me, they said, you must have made a mistake with that when you actually put it into the system, because you did one twelfth of, you know, or one tenth of it. And I said, no, that's no mistake. We actually did it right. So, just all those added up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a Bernina Burnett 46 sewing machine valued at $250 be accepted from James Landen.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
It's a beauty, I have to tell you. It's a beauty. It's something that we would remember from, for me, from being a child. It's how old it is.
Is it one of the pedal ones?
It's an old one? It's not a pedal. Thanks.
Wow, Mike. That really hurt.
Mike, wow. We just left the cookies for next meeting.
Thanks, Mike.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the hours for bus attendant Joanne Zalinski be reduced from 4.25 hours per day to three hours per day.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the teacher early retirement incentive be approved for one teacher.
Second.
Discussion.
Only that when the board approved the early retirement incentive for full-time teachers, it had a minimum of three teachers on there. We have one teacher who has applied for the incentive, and so my recommendation is for... for us to accept that and still do the early teacher retirement for just one. So, that is what the recommendation is for. It's not a new incentive. It's the same one, but for one and not three.
And Tom, what was the savings with just one teacher?
What we're looking at is roughly about $25,000.
Okay.
Is that after the teacher gets the $10,000 or before?
It's after.
So, we would have been saving $35,000.
But she probably wouldn't have retired.
Ken?
Ken.
Hard to know.
I move that upon the recommendation of the...
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
To oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the building use fee schedule be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
This is something that we've discussed before, and it went to Legal and Policy Committee, and we looked at what other districts are doing in this regard, and it also is a potential revenue source for us. So, if you look at it...
We can actually put it up for everyone to see.
Oh, great.
We can get half of it at one time. Here you go.
So, it actually breaks down potential users of school facilities into four different groups, and I won't go through it in detail, but three or two out of the four groups will have to pay for use of school facilities. One of those two paying groups will have basically a 50% off rate, and the group that will pay 100% for use of school facilities would be non-for-profits, non-school-related, what you might think of as a private entity. And I think we approved this concept that we were going to do this, and then we sent it back to the administration to ask them to actually put some numbers on the different space that was going to be used, and this now includes those specific numbers or rates. And I would say this is what basically all the other districts are doing. We're a little bit behind the curve on this, but it is a potential revenue source, and we need all that we can get at this point. Assuming we pass this tonight, though, I would say that the next step that's required is we need a procedure in place to account for how groups will now apply for the usage of the space for various times, and then how the space will be allotted. In other words, what's the priority? What's the system for that? And if two groups want the same space at the same time, how does that play out? And how is that going to be determined? So, having this, this is the first step, but I think we need the administration now to come up with a procedure for how groups will request the space and how the space will be allotted, and will there be a priority, for example, based on what kind of group they are and that kind of thing.
But school groups would still take full priority, right?
The policy should become effective for July 1st, so having those protocols in place fast becomes really important. The protocols would not be something that the Board of Ed would approve, so procedures would not be. The policy is, although we would certainly share those protocols in the hierarchy with you. The question that Mike just asked me, can you repeat it for me?
That's school organizations would have...
Yes, and so that's what I'm understanding, Mr. Campbell, to talk about is who would get it first. And my feeling is that school groups would come first, but of course, everything has to be timely. If a school related group asked on a Wednesday to have something the following Monday, but somebody asked that was not a school-related group by a deadline, should we establish a deadline in this procedure? Then certainly that all changes because if there's a three-month, let's say, heads-up on somebody that wants to use a facility, and three days before, the school group comes in and says, "Hey, I want it," that reminds me of my stepkids, and I think that would really have been a problem when they were five. So, I think that's going to be a conversation for the administrative committee to have.
And how do we inform people that have been using it for nothing? How do we go about the procedure to let them know that it's now a cost? Do we have a list of people that we know use it? Like, I do know the 4-H has used this for their presentations.
And we can put that within our conversation as well. How would you let them all know? It's a good question.
4-H is free under this. It's right there on the right-hand column.
They are free except for the one event they do over the summer. There's a single event that doesn't qualify.
So, Tom, why don't you jump in and talk a little bit about what's on the bottom?
Okay.
Because there might be a fee associated even if you're free.
Okay.
So, according to this, should you approve it?
First of all, a couple of things. Number one, in terms of the budget for this year, since this is brand-new, we did not budget revenue for this year. After year one, where we see where we landed, then we can say we are expecting to have revenues for the following year, but to do it in year one where we don't know, wouldn't be prudent. So, we did not. So, that's additional revenue, which is great if this works well. Number two, to answer your question, Barb specifically, Kathy Dobson specifically has been telling groups that the board has already approved having a building usage fee, not a pricing structure. We needed to come back and have the pricing structure approved by the board. So, she has been letting groups know as it comes up, and once the pricing structure's in place, she will let them know as well. So, that's already started.
Well, I think on the 4-H, I do know that they do, is it all Erie County? It's not just Eden kids? So, that's a little questionable.
There's one event, and I'm sorry, I'm not that familiar with it. There's one event they do which is broader than just the Eden group, which actually would be charged. So, but they do some that are just Eden kids as well, so...
Yeah. I don't know either.
But that would be part of that whole application form, so, you know, Kathy would be able to look at that and say, "Okay, this group falls into this structure, this falls into that." And just to let everyone know as well, part of letting people know is right here. So, in addition to newsletters and all that, so just to briefly go over, again, there are four groups. The first group, which is free, is school-related groups. PTA, boosters, community education, and I just want to go over the categories where everyone at least has a chance to hear because this is a sea change from what we've done in the past. Number two, also free as well, nonprofit community groups focusing on youth where 60% of the kids are Eden residents. So, Boys and Girls Club, Eden Town Rec, Boy Scouts, Eden 4-H, again, the event that, not the event that has all of Erie County.
That's also free.
That's free as well. And there's a caveat with all this, and I'll tell you...
I think two different things, just got to state.
Yep, and I'll talk about that in a second. Third group, nonprofit groups that are focusing on adults and families where 60% of the participants are Eden residents. That's 50% charge, and 100% charge are for-profit groups and all others where they're not primarily Eden residents. And where we said free, free, 50, 100, that applies to the fee schedule. What would be additional to that is the additional fees apply, as we're also used to hearing. If there are additional staff that need to be brought in...
It's at the bottom.
At the very bottom. As an example, if someone rents out the cafeteria, and we have a food service person here, or the kitchen, thank you, the kitchen specifically, and there is a food service person here for that, anytime we now use the kitchen, there will be a food service person that's required. We have to pay for that time, so that's a separate fee.
I think that's worth having a little more discussion about because in the past, people would use the kitchen without a kitchen staff being there, and the liability to the district is overwhelming to me. Should someone cut themselves, leave the oven on, leave the freezer open, so, or just leave the door open afterwards, any of those pieces become a liability to us and a potential danger to somebody who may not use, know how to use that equipment in the kitchen.
Or items walking.
And items have walked for whatever the reason. So, a piece of this policy is stating that when the kitchen is used, that a personal, that a personal touch staff member will also be on-site. That's really worth focusing on.
Custodians. If it's something where custodian is not normally on duty, so if they're already here, there's no additional charge, but if we call someone in for it, there would be an additional charge for it, the rates are down below as well. Same thing with technicians. So, let's just say someone's in the odd and they are requesting a technician to use equipment. If there's not someone available on staff during regular hours and someone's called in, there'd be a charge. If there's a student technician, there is a lower charge. And what I wanted to point out, and just to let everyone know, when the board asked for this, this is a sea change that has not happened here, so every chance that we can to let people know prior to July 1st, I think it's incumbent on us because it will be very different for using the facilities for the coming year. The fees that you see up above are pretty standard for what you see around the region. And in terms of the safety factor, even having this, and I mean, we've had a very open-door policy for a very long time of people being able to use the buildings. If nothing else, with them now clearly registering for it, we should know who's in the building at all times, so that fits in with the safety plan as well.
Let's do a scenario.
Okay, so let's...
I think I heard the two of you say something different.
Okay, so let's look at the high school auditorium. That is the most expensive, so let's use that as an example. So, if someone wants to rent out the high school auditorium, let's use Mary Ellis's Dance Studio as an example, a for-profit business which has never before been able to rent out our auditorium. So, if they want to do it, what we're seeing is it's $300 for two hours.
Minimum charge.
That's the minimum which they're going to pay. If they go over that, it's additional $150, up to a maximum of $750. And so, if they're booking recital space elsewhere, they may say this is a great deal. They may say it's not. It depends, but it does give them another option, and it gives us, again, revenue source. Yes.
In the past, have Dance Studios asked and we've said no?
Yes.
Okay.
That is one of the things that prompted this earlier in the year is they had, again, asked us here, and there was no provision to say yes or no.
The other question I have is insurance. Do we have to purchase additional insurance for this?
They need to provide insurance.
Just like they do now.
They have to provide their own insurance.
Correct.
Right. So, one of the pieces that we have been more restrictive on this year is those type of events that carry a high risk toward, to them. And so, what we have asked some of those groups that carry a higher risk, perhaps it's handball or very, very young children, is for them to work with SuperAC Town Rec to see if Town Rec will cover them. And they've had really good luck doing that, and Town Rec has been amazing at working with our people. So, that helps us a lot, too. Can you do a...
Well, and just to finish that example, so you're talking $750.
Yep.
And that includes standard equipment such as standard lighting, single microphone and screen. Does not include stage lighting. So, for dancer recital, they're probably going to want, obviously, stage lighting. It makes sense. So, what they would need to do is then have a technician on as well, and that technician, depending on the day, Saturdays cost a little more, or Sundays cost a little more.
And a custodian.
And the custodian, so, but for the technician itself, it's $30 or $35 per hour. Custodian would be $30 or $35 per hour to pay for their time. Another example you wanted to hear, let's just look at the...
Let's do 4-H because I think that came up.
4-H for their single event of which they use and have more than Eden kids here. Want to use that one or the one where they're just having an internal event?
What do you want to call it?
I'd like to do the present, because I know they've been doing the presentations here for years, but a lot of the kids come from North Collins, a lot of them come from Eden, and you'd probably have to see how many, if 60% come from Eden or not.
So, let me see if I can frame it.
It's back in February.
60% of the, of those participating in that event or 60% who are part of Eden 4-H? Who are...
We said participate in an event. I mean, it says youth participants. I read that as the people participate in that. So, we'll have sign-in sheets and look to see if 60% are.
So, that's going to be, that's going to be a gray line for them.
It is.
Recruiting all the...
Mm-hmm.
I see Colin crinkling his eyebrows.
No.
You okay?
And I think that's a good development. If organizations have to recruit more Eden kids, that's more opportunities for Eden kids, right?
But let's just, let's just take Boys and Girls Club as an example. They're just having an event here, whatever the case may be.
Or Boy Scouts.
Or Boy Scouts, and it's an internal event, and they're just want to use the space. Let's say if they just want to use the cafeteria, not the kitchen, there's no charge. So, let's say they want to use it at 6 o'clock. There's already custodian on, there's no one additional who needs to come in, there is no charge because 60% of the participants would be Eden students. So, again, no charge in that scenario.
But it's Sunday where we don't have a custodian on.
If it's Sunday, then the charge would apply.
So, they would pay for that.
Correct.
But the cafeteria itself does not garner a charge?
Not for the Boy Scouts or...
Well, the cafeteria doesn't for anybody at all.
It does.
It does?
Mm-hmm. Right here. Take a look. High school cafeteria without the kitchen would be 50. The elementary and GLP without the kitchen would be 25.
Yeah, I do have another question because I don't know, the Eden Dolphins, do they pay for the pool right now? Or is that under, is that under the town recreation?
They donate something that they do.
Yeah, they don't pay right now, but they do make a donation. That's as best I can say at this point.
Will they, under this, will they be paying or is it under Eden Recreation? I don't know.
They are part of Town Rec. So, if they're part of Town Rec, they would be a group two?
They're under Town, they're under Town Rec. They fall under Group Two, so they're free. As long as they have, they show us their record that they have 60% or more, but they follow with Town Rec.
There was discussion in the committee, and I will share this with everyone, that for large users, if they are absolutely free, that we would request that they would make a donation for supplies extra use for chlorine and all that. So, there's, there were three that came into play that are not on here that would have to be addressed. That's one of them. I can't remember who...
The background to this policy is to be fair to the residents of Eden and the use of the public facility, which is why we have stated no in the past to some groups. I mean, I love the drum corps group or the dance studios because it's a high cost to us. So, we've stated no because we couldn't take on that cost. But this would be an opportunity as a group four to actually make some money off of somebody who really isn't from Eden itself, and that was important to the, to the board and to the original people on the committee. So, this came out of the legal subcommittee.
Tom, you said that you did not budget for any possible increase in revenue there.
He's so conservative.
No, because let's just say all the external groups say no way, and only the internal groups use it. We wouldn't make any money, and we'd have on the books that we are expecting to make all this money and not, and well, then I'd have to find it somewhere else.
And then, let's say someone does rent out the odd for $750. Where does that money then go?
General fund.
It would go towards the general fund.
Okay.
So, then we as a board have the ability to apply that to, say, the musical?
We don't apply anything, and the general fund doesn't get applied in a specific spot. The board can certainly say, "You want to allocate, not from necessarily these revenues, but you want to give more money to any program." That is certainly the board's prerogative. We'd have to cut somewhere else to make up for it. When you adopted your budget number at the last meeting, your budget number is your budget number. That is your spending plan. You cannot go over that spending plan.
I meant in future years.
In...
If there's revenue that's made from this.
If there's revenue, then what you can say is for next year's budget, you know that this year we made $30,000 of revenue. That'd be wonderful to see. And as we're looking at the potential cuts for next year, we could say, "Well, one area, looking at the potential cuts for next year, we could say, well, one area, if we're going to make $30,000 more, there's less cuts and you can direct where you want those less cuts to actually be in there.
Good question.
So we could do something along the lines. And I guess if the odd was rented out, then for the following year, we could look at putting that money towards musical or the sports facilities for you.
You can say you don't want to have as many cuts. But I will tell you, this is what's going to happen next year. We are going to have a deficit situation in the millions of dollars again. And you could say even with the $30,000 that we made from here, apply it towards whatever. We're still going to have such a large deficit.
You won't even see it.
Unfortunately, it's, I mean, you could say, we don't want to touch this program. And as a board, you always have that prerogative, just like we've been discussing as we've been through the whole budget process. So is that a fair enough answer?
Sure. Yep.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the MOU regarding department chair stipend reductions be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to ask Sandy to go over this. Isn't this, and Tom, isn't this part of our budget cuts?
Yes, we're looking at L.
Everyone is getting hit.
Yeah, we're looking at L and this was an agreement by ETA and signed by the president for ETA, which is Colleen Cott, to say that rather than having a reduction of four department chairs, that they would prefer to once again continue with the stipend reductions that they have had for the past few years. And so it'll look exactly like it does this year, but it definitely was part of the budget.
Anyone else? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the Board of Education, the 2014-2019 contract for the superintendent be approved effective April 22, 2014, as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask one question. I was looking at, I know we already approved it, but I'm just confused of grand totals. It was on page 19 on the agenda. It's showing that there was available funding that's left over as far as like, that's what I'm reading, of $1,185,642.83. So right there. Can you tell me what that is?
The appropriations status report? Absolutely. So...
Okay.
You got two different things happening at the same time.
Yeah, it is separate from the contract. This really is not part of the contract.
Because I don't make a million dollars, so I know that's...
No, this has absolutely nothing to do with our contracts.
Okay, that's not our budget?
No.
That is, but it has nothing to do with the superintendent's contract. This is just in general.
Oh, I thought we were on the budget thing.
No.
I'm sorry. Wouldn't you like to be making that?
It's my interest, especially since my name was on the news last week.
Well, this contract does not have a pay increase, so it's still the same that you were making this past year. So anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, $1,621 be transferred from the Unemployment Reserve Fund to the general fund to cover first quarter billing for unemployment benefits.
Second.
Discussion?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Tom, if you want to talk about this at all?
I'm sorry.
I'm not sure if Tom wanted some discussion. I'm sorry. Can we back up?
Yep.
Which they're on N.
Unemployment Reserve Fund?
Oh, the Unemployment Reserve Fund. Thank you for telling me what it was. As we discussed, the board did approve use of reserves this year for the unemployment bills as they come in. And this is from last year's layoffs. So this is just a bill for this month. And so we actually have to transfer the money from the Unemployment Reserve to the general fund to be able to use it to pay the bill.
Tom, I do have a question on that. I do understand that the unemployment, as you have more people collect unemployment, that our bill for unemployment or a percentage goes up. Is that correct?
We're billed direct for it.
Pardon?
We're billed for it direct, yes.
It doesn't increase as you have more?
So as more people file, we are billed directly from the Labor Department for their unemployment costs. So as they come in, if more people are laid off, that is correct.
So the more we lay off, the more, the higher it's going to be?
That's correct. But what we're able to do with that is then use the reserves, the unemployment reserve to, if they, well, right, if they apply and we get the bill for it, we can transfer money from the Unemployment Reserve to the general fund to pay for that. And that's exactly what you're seeing here, what we plan to do, the use of reserves.
So we don't actually have insurance. We're self-insured for unemployment, so we pay dollar for dollar.
We pay dollar for dollar.
So it's not prorated like when you own a business.
Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's why you have to have that reserve fund. And what do we have in that fund?
I'd have to look at the balance. I mean, enough to cover all of ours. I just don't remember off the top of my head. And I don't like to give wrong answers. I can look and let you know last time or next time.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
If he had known the answer to that off the top of his head, I'd have been really worried.
Wait, what was that?
If he had known the answer to that, I would have been concerned for him, seriously.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2013-2014 appropriations be increased by $25,000 to $25,778,403.84 to account for increased revenues.
Second.
Discussion?
And this is just a great point for me, just in terms of talking about what we talked about before. When we set the budget, we set the budget 25,720 for this year. So when you see any donations come in, what you see is increased appropriations. We used to say increase the budget. We're not increasing the budget. The budget stays the same. But since we had a donation for the playground, we increased the appropriations. The budget stays the same. So the next year, we still start with that lower number of the 25,700. So when we began this process, we began with a 25,720, not this 25,778.
So I think a question that came up in the planning of tonight's meeting was, what if somebody donated a million dollars?
If someone donates a million dollars to board in a case like that, would be, in my mind, crazy not to want to accept a million dollars. It's a wonderful thing. However, your budget is set at 25,720. So the board would need to vote to increase the budget. Not the appropriations, but the actual budget itself. It's considered an extraordinary circumstance. It happens very rarely. Wish it happened more, but it doesn't. So...
We're praying.
Anyone with a million want to donate? Please feel free. We'll work through that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Information and proposals. Administration.
Okay. That would be me. And listen, I'm ready to go. So...
My head is...
Okay. And we passed some copies out tonight. We have a few more. So if anyone would like a copy they don't have, we've got two additional more you can share. Rose, for your unit. We've got two additional if anyone wants any.
Can you hand me that?
Rose, we'll pass them out if anyone wants it. Okay. A couple of comments before getting into all this, and we'll make sure that we go over this so everyone has a chance to see as much as possible. First of all, we began a process this year, which, again, as the board, you all know, is different than in any other year previously with the budget advisory team. I cannot say it enough of, I think, what a great job all the budget advisory team members did. The board really wanted to make a concerted effort to bring the community into the process. And I think that's a wonderful idea. It's a very complicated budget when you look at all the different facets that go into a $25 million budget. And to explain it at a community meeting or to explain it when you're going out to talking to a group of people in 20 minutes is not an easy thing to do. And I think most of the budget advisory team members who sat through the process would probably agree as we went through everything that there's a whole lot to it, things that you really may not have thought were included in the process. And Don is shaking his head. I mean, there's just more to it than what, you know, most people realize all the minutia. So what we wanted to do is really go through it, give everyone a sense as to what's part of it. Was there an expectation by the end of year one, and I think I saw this in most emails too, that everyone on the bat would be an expert on the budget? No. It's a complicated thing. It will take actually years. In my old district, there were people who've been on the bat for six or seven years and they've got most parts down. There are certain things they're still learning six or seven years later. But the other thing, and again, I commend the board on this as well, is with the budget advisory team, when you're shoring up a shortfall of over $2 million, you can have a group of people thinking of all the different solutions. You're only as good as the solutions and ideas of which you have. And the more ideas and the more people and the more inclusion, the stronger the budget's going to be. And I would say, when I began this process, I think I said to everyone, we will have tough choices to face this year. We did. And I certainly, in hearing everyone tonight, you know, and I agree with what you said. I mean, there are tough choices that had to be made. And the board in adopting it, I will say this, agonized over a lot of this. They were not personal cuts in any way, shape or form. But at the end of the day, you have to be at a balanced budget. You cannot be in the red and adopt the budget. It's against state law. So one of the guiding factors that moved the board, that moved the administrators, that moved the budget advisory team is we really tried very hard to preserve academic program. Last year, there were a lot of cuts across the board. So one of the guiding forces was, again, that focus on the academic program. So as the budget advisor team began the process, you'll see, there were monthly meetings and some months, bi-monthly meetings, where they looked at various components. So, you know, the orientation, we looked at revenues, we looked at non-personnel, transportation. And I know you can all perhaps see this, but I know in some past presentations, it's been difficult to read or whatnot. So I'm going to read some of this here. So please bear with me. Buildings and grounds, superintendent, finance department, curriculum and instruction. Again, more with buildings and grounds, athletics, technology, PPS. We had a community forum in February. I was shocked. It was the most complimentary community forum I've ever been to in my life anywhere. So I was just amazed when I watched that process. In March, looked at staffing, which is traditionally when most districts really begin looking at staffing, is in the March timeframe. Draft of expenditure budget came on March 15, when we had our second community forum. On March 19, again, a draft of expenditure budget. And finally, on April 8, we actually had the board adopt the budget presentation. And we will also, as you see on May 6, have a public hearing on the budget with the vote to be on May 20. Okay. Budget implications from New York State to donations to fund balance to reserves. A lot of what drove the process this year was the gap elimination adjustment. We have talked about it, ad nauseam. We've looked at it. Had we not had a gap elimination adjustment, a lot of what we had to look at as we went on in the process, we would not have had to look at. When you're looking at over a million dollars for the gap elimination, that really, I have to tell you, would help us out as we're looking at making the choices over a program, over the musical, anything that we were looking at. So that drove a lot of the tough choices that had to be made this year. So I just, again, we said it ad nauseam, but it doesn't hurt to, again, point it out again. But when you take a look at the gap elimination adjustment, and what we actually look at is you start with the governor's budget. That comes first. Then from there, that's generally the worst-case scenario. Then the Assembly and the Senate, they talk with the governor. They each have their own different versions of what the budget will actually be. And in the end, they all come together. Hopefully by April 1, they did it this year. We were very nervous at the very end since they were still bickering about it, that they would not have it by April 1. They did. And they came back and said, hey, we have good news accompanied with some bad news. The good news, we're giving you $216,000 more. Let me clarify. They weren't giving us $216,000 more. They were not taking $216,000 away. It's semantics, we know. But still, nonetheless, they said, you're getting $216,000 more. It's wonderful. It's great. Oh, but we tweaked some of our formulas and some of our aid, and we're going to take back $106,000. There you go. Leaving a net difference of $109. However, in the planning process, a couple weeks before, you take a look and you do your best forecasting as to what you think the state's going to do and where they're going to come in. And we anticipated for some of those losses. Yes.
Tom, I'd like, if you could just reiterate to the people that are here, because there's a lot of people here, and let them know that the state budget is balanced because of the schools.
It is balanced on the backs of schools and not just schools, municipalities.
And municipalities.
But absolutely. They have to balance their budget just as we do, and they need to find a way to do it. And there you go. There's a huge sum of money across the state that's given to schools as well as municipalities that, you know, what if it takes them away? It balances our budget. And so, yes, that's actually a very good point.
Is that just this year?
No, it's not. We've been dealing with this for several years now.
2009?
2009, 2010. And we'll be dealing with it for a couple more years to come. There's talk whether it could be eliminated within a year or two, some say five. Again, I'm not a magician. I don't have the magic ball, but I would say we're probably looking, my guess, probably another two years of going through this. We'll get through it.
Tom, I think the biggest piece to me, and I apologize if you can't all hear me, but is that the newspaper was very clear about talking about the restoration coming down. And one of the board members, I actually think it was Paul, who texted me and said, is this really true numbers? So my response back, well, it is in the front, but they're taking it away in the back. And that doesn't get recorded out. So this may be the first time that some people are truly seeing those numbers up on the screen.
But fortunate for us, as I said, we had anticipated some of those losses coming our way. So when they said 216, had we not anticipated, it really would have been 109. But since we planned for it, it really was kind of what we were hoping for and kind of planning on anyway. So we got what we needed to get us where we actually needed to be. We also, to help our budget out, we had a certain attorney who may be sitting at this table donate some of his services at the last meeting. So we very much appreciate it. We will work you to death. We absolutely promise you that, to make up for that. He's probably going, yeah, great, thanks. But thank you very much. We appreciate it.
So legal fees?
Yes.
We currently have, as a school district, how many lawyers?
Two different sets of attorneys. One specifically for special education and one for all other matters.
Okay.
And Boses does actually consult on other things as well. That is true.
So for those three different lawyers, we have contracts with them?
We get billed.
Have to pay by the hour? How's it work?
We get billed by the hour. So what we'll do on ones that are not a conflict for Mr. Campbell, he can look at those ones. And so we won't get billed from the other attorneys.
Okay.
So, and we'll do that in the amount of what you donate.
And we changed lawyers from last year, correct?
Two years ago.
The year before?
Yeah, it was before I came. So two years.
Okay.
I think it's been two years.
It's been two years. And they're in Rochester?
Honey, I...
The one?
They have a base in Buffalo as well.
Their headquarters is in Rochester, but they have Buffalo offices.
And is that, I'm just wondering and just stating publicly, like, they're not coming from Rochester?
No. Very rarely do they actually come here.
Okay. So it's more, you call them on the phone and it's so many dollars an hour?
They research, yes.
Okay. All right. Okay.
And then finally, the fund balance and reserves. We kicked that up from last year, 713 to $1,040. You asked a very specific question about the appropriations status report and showing that it's over a million. That was the March. If you looked at the April 1, it was about 960. That will keep going down as more bills come in. We are hoping to end about, as I said, about $500,000.
So there would be $500,000 left by the end of this budget?
Which we're planning on having 550 for next year. And if we don't, we're in trouble. So we are banking on being at 550.
Okay. So that 550, we've already accounted for that for somewhere?
Yes.
We're watching our spending closely to make sure we don't go below that.
Okay.
We encumber funds for various things throughout the year. So the expenses that we know about. But we always get hit up for things that we don't know about. So if a student comes in from another district, that's special education that we need to pay for, it's a $20,000 bill. And we weren't unaware of it, we have to pay it. So again, that's why we cut off spending early on in the year, about December, to make sure that we have enough money to be able to pay for that.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So now, what we looked at, and again, I want to point out, as we talk about the budget neutral additions, every year, every district really needs to take a look at where we're at programmatically. And really what I'm saying by that is, what do students need every year? Do they need more German, which they're requesting this year? So I use that as an example. Do they need more German next year than what was this year? And that's the case. And then you try to make sure that you're accommodating the student need. So, and that is just actually what I call right sizing the ship. So a lot of the things that we looked at is what do students need for next year? And to do that in a budget neutral category is to say, okay, if we want to add some programming in one area, the fiscally responsible thing to do is to say, if you're going to add one place, where are you going to take from? So your budget's still relatively neutral. So these aren't budget additions. These aren't budget cuts that we're talking about right now. These are the budget neutral to get where we need to be for students for next year. Okay? So what we looked at is technology. This is one that was gone back and forth on. There was a cut last year, and the hope was to bring technology back this year higher than actually where it is, but was settled at a .34. Library, particularly at the elementary school. Students may have been sitting in the library but didn't necessarily have a librarian there to have the full librarian services. So that was a need as well. Special education, driven by the students who come into this district. We've had a wonderful special education program here in this district. They get services which I think are second to none. That's good and bad. The good part is our students are getting the best possible services available. The bad part about that is it's expensive. Special education costs significantly more than general education. So you always try to balance those. But if students move in, so we have an addition of .90. A slight increase in music. And in physical education, we had, you know, really not covered ourselves at the end of last year. We have more need, you know, for the coming year to make sure we're in compliance. So adding back...
Tom, could you just take a moment and talk about that increase in special education? Because we also use that as revenue. And I don't believe that we've had a lot of conversation about that.
If there is a student from another district who attends our district, and we have several students who actually do attend. But if someone is in from Hamburg, let's just say, and they're actually getting an education in our district, we do have to, you know, have the staff for it, but we will actually get reimbursed by the other district. So there is a revenue source that we actually have as well. Is that what you were looking for, Sandy?
Yes, thank you very, very much.
Okay. And we do have that accounted for in our revenues. Okay? Okay. The budget neutral reductions. And again, if you're getting one thing, what are you giving up on the other? Just again, you're basically about the same. And we definitely heard comments tonight, you, the board, you've heard them in the past as well, about the REACH program, a .40, and Family Consumer Science. Now, this one, as you saw on the board agenda tonight, very happy to say, this is not an actual reduction, a person retired. So there is no one who's laid off to compensate. actual reduction, a person retired, so there is no one who's laid off to compensate for that, so that's a good sign. Any chance that you can actually not do that, always the better, okay? Budget reduction for program. Absolutely. What would you like to?
So, just on the backs of the Family Consumer Science, because there is a retirement associated with this position, the recommendation is to hire back?
Yes, so we are, so the person is retiring, Dan's retiring, and we are not eliminating 1.0. What we said we needed for the budget-neutral was, and forgive me, I always mix up the .49 and .51.
Hiring .49.
Right, so we are eliminating .51 for the budget-neutral, we will hire back a new person at .49, okay? It's not new, it's not additional dollars, it's just replacement dollars, okay? Again, now with the budget reductions for academic program, all of this so far, we've been talking about has been academic program. So the only budget reduction to academic program is teacher assistant with the suspension room. This is good for everyone to see, because again, this goes with one of the highlights that every effort this year was made to keep academic program as intact as possible. There are other cuts, and we'll go over them, but they're not direct academic program, okay?
So, your question in this one, Ed, is that if we don't have the suspension room, is what do we do with students who are suspended? Years ago, it was illegal for school districts to send students to BOSI's for a service that they provide, and so we do that now, three days a week, sometimes we do it five days a week, depending on the nature of the suspension, our students who are suspended will go to BOSI's, so that's the difference.
To do what?
They do work there, and we send work with them. It's not nearly as good as being in the classroom, it's better than being home.
And at what cost?
$63 a day after reimbursements by BOSI's per student per day.
It's the cheapest we ever do.
So when kids are bad, we have to pay for it?
Yes.
Well, we pay one way or the other.
He's right.
And Barb, we need our service commitments for BOSI's next year, we have accounted for that.
No, we do, you're absolutely right.
And our service commitments are even down, even with that.
Because if you didn't send them to BOSI's, we are required to teach the students, and so even if we send them home after a reasonable amount of time, by law, you still have to provide services for them. So a reasonable amount of time is indeed to be somewhere between two and three days unless you're sustaining circumstances and not finding a home instructor, but we are required by law to educate students. Because that could be in prison, they could be in the hospital, could be at home, could be at BOSI's, and.
Next one, academic program maintaining. This is one that was on the list previously of cutting .17 in German, for German 7 specifically. Student requests this year were at 29 for next year, and so again, for student programming, it doesn't make sense to cut German 7 if you have that high of a student desire to take the class. We put that back in, we found money elsewhere. And I would say with this program and all other programs, we look at all the programs after, you know, students are actually enrolled in it, and say, okay, now, it's not just what did they say they wanted, and that's the end of the process, all of our programs, as they get underway, we look to see how many kids are actually enrolled. If there's only one student enrolled, that's something that we would actually look at the program too. So not necessarily German or any program, all of the programs we would look at to see, you know, the actual enrollment versus what they said they wanted to do, okay?
Tom, I thought we cut the German.
No, we actually brought that back.
When?
At the end of last meeting, when we looked at the cuts.
Because it was going to cost us more the following year to bring in another teacher, and we're going to, because of that, I.
Correct, but you the board did decide at the end of last meeting to keep that. Okay, next, bridging the gap. This is something I'm actually very proud to say, and this is something you don't see in many other districts, so I don't think it can actually be stated enough, and for many people sitting in this room. It is a tough budget year when we had a $2 million gap that we were looking at, and there's one of two things that we can all do as we're trying to outlive this gap elimination adjustment. We can turn against each other, or we can all work together and say, how are we going to get through this process? And I say, by seeing this, I think you could see, everyone has chosen the latter, how do we work together, how are we going to get through this? So I think our hats really go off to look at this. There are people who will be working next year, taking a furlough day, so, I mean, they'll be not getting paid for a day. So they said, you know, we won't work, we won't get paid, we'll take the day off, reduce it from our salary. There are groups who are saying, you know what, we're willing to have a reduction in our health benefits. So, and just to point out, because I think it is important to point out, so, the administrators have said, we will take a furlough day. The supervisors have said, we will take a furlough day. The teachers' association, and I think this is great, and so thank you very much, have said, you know what, we'll take a reduction in our health benefits, and I think that speaks volumes. And again, that is something I would not see in other districts, so thank you very much, okay? Okay, budget reductions, aside from academic program strictly, extracurricular reductions. And again, we've heard from many people tonight, none of these are easy choices, absolutely none. So when you take a look at this, athletics, as we well know from multiple conversations that the board's had over the last couple of meetings, the conversation has gone back and forth with athletics and where we're going to be. At the end of last meeting, this board has said, we will restore $50,000 of the funding that's still left, a $16,000 budget gap for, to be made up in athletics, which is currently being done right now. Musical, 30% reduction in both the junior, senior high school musical and also the elementary musical. So it's $5,800 at the junior, senior high school and $2,636 at the elementary. Extracurriculars, we actually had sent a dollar amount of 20, it ends up being a little less, this also ends up being about 30% for the extracurriculars as well. So, looking at some of those, that's in terms of extracurriculars. When we start taking a look at now, people part of it. A bowling coach, still maintaining the team, but one bowling coach. Three teacher aides, and just to let everyone know, there's one aide that we would not be filling, so it's not as if we're letting go, again, one we would not be filling. One head bus mechanic, and I think, and the comment was made tonight about Ricky, this head bus mechanic resignation wasn't in fact that. And I think it was wonderful, you know, what Dan did, I think that is, again, speaks volumes for this district and what people are willing to do to help others around here. So, the Ricky portion, which you talked about, that's off the table, so, because that brings that down to two. The bus attendant, there's one position that is actually not being filled. Buildings and grounds, when Jim Walters retired, there was a definite plan to replace his position with a crew person, not another supervisor, but a crew person. That position is not being filled, even though I'm sure athletics can definitely say there is a definite need for the fields and work being done on the field, that's not being filled. Bus attendants.
Could you just stop for one minute?
Yes.
Because I think that that's a really important point, both of those, that the mechanic who certainly had Mr. Bass speak about earlier, but also the building and grounds, because in the building and the grounds, it doesn't matter how many times you go out and line those fields, if it snows again or rains again, Rista, am I right, you do it all over again? And the spring sports are the ones that are the most complicated because of the weather right now. So we actually do have our building and grounds people doing something more than once, and again, it's supposed to snow tomorrow, I'm hearing, so whatever slides, God, Rista, but you're going to do it again.
And as we talked about transportation, and I will tell everyone this here, and so, we talked about transportation, and that'll be on the next slide, but with that, with the associated savings with transportation, and that is derived by lessing gas costs and also lessing driver and attendant time. Specifically what that equates to is two attendants with their hours being reduced, and then five drivers either having their hours reduced or being eliminated. I will tell everyone right now, this is partially dependent on special education and the placement of our students. If we get a new student who we have to bus wherever, we're not able to put that student on an existing bus, you know, you will hear during the year that is, our best-laid plans, a budget document is that, a budget, and it can change. So I don't, I want to be upfront and let people know, so no one comes back and says, you said this was a definitive. It is in our best plan, but it always can happen.
Tom, can you just back up for a moment?
Sure.
You specifically stated special education.
That is one of the biggest changes in the transportation department.
No, it's because special ed students are required to.
Correct.
And I know that the board, the general public knows that, so will you have the money?
Okay, so if a student, a special education student, actually, they go to committee every year to be reviewed to make sure that their needs are being met, and in that committee meeting, and Sean, please feel free to speak up if I say anything out of turn, but in that committee meeting, there is what is known as an IEP, which is created, it is a document which states what services that child is to be provided.
So, I'm going to jump to the front, because I feel you're going down a direction that maybe it's either 10-month or 12-month, so they could be receiving transportation for 12.
Okay.
But all special ed kids get bused, maybe making them to their IEP.
Okay.
Which is not true of Gen X students.
No, but there may be additional things placed in their IEP that they are required to have a nurse with them, if they're required to have certain equipment with them, a wheelchair, so it's not just the busing issue, there's also other parts that come with it. Air conditioning, we have all those, and when those come in, we have no choice but to go by what the IEP says. If not, we can be sued by not doing what the IEP says. So that provides the greatest unknown factor when it comes to transportation, because for the most part, when school starts, for general education students, you will have some new students register, but for the most part, you will have a spot or two open for them, that doesn't fluctuate that much, okay? Now, with the transportation, what the board looked at is, and actually, as we did research on this, this worked out actually very well, and you didn't even realize how well it actually worked out. Group pickups, so what we looked at for group pickups, group pickups for streets on the east side of Main Street between Church and School View. That actually mirrors what we are already doing on the west side of Main Street between Church and School View. And according to state regs, you are supposed to provide like-transportation, so we are not providing on one side, we shouldn't be providing on the other, or for providing on one, then we should provide on the other. One way or the other, we should be in Sepatico. Now we are, so we're meeting the regs there. The other, walkers from the Weller subdivision may use the cut-through or the footpath between Merrill Place and School View. Again, also in connection with the regs with footpaths.
So, elementary and GOP have to walk all the way down to the high school footpath and then back up to elementary and GOP?
May use. I mean, parents always have different options that they want to do that, but state regs do allow for the footpath use, correct?
And is lighting going to be put up there?
That is actually a town sidewalk footpath, so I cannot answer that question because that's beyond me. I don't know the.
There's lighting on the footpath, but to be honest, it's not that bright, it's one of those energy saver lights that.
Well, is it on the road?
It's right off the footpath.
No, it's in between, it's like in between homes, and it goes right from Weller to School View. It's a sidewalk.
It's right out here, you can see it tonight when you go out.
Okay.
Yep.
Are there lights when the kids?
Well, I know that boy got hit there, so I'm just wondering, you know, with the little kids, it's big kid, I mean, he was a high school kid, so, yeah, it's just, safety issues definitely need to be addressed here.
Absolutely, and.
Seriously.
Oh, correct.
So, if I may, again, if you can't hear me, let me know, so I have meetings coming up in the next few weeks with Len Ellis, the town supervisor, and John McCarthy, who's our school resource officer, and pardon me, he produced the party, to talk about any assistance that they can give us, especially the police force, during arrival and dismissal times in the schools. So for example, could they be at School View and Weller? Could they be over by GLP Elementary, the kids are crossing around? We've also talked about what we can do in terms of supervision on our own property. We don't have the right to direct traffic, that we don't hold the roads. We also, I also can talk with the town supervisor about the brightness of that light, certainly that. In addition to that, the conversation that I intend to bring up with him is the signage. So if my words were to stay, could you state that again?
That we did add signage once.
So there was signage that was added after the incident that occurred in front of the school, but what I've been talking about with John McCarthy for the past year was actually reducing the speed limit on School View into a school zone speed limit, which could either be 15 or 25, it could be hours of the day during arrival of dismissal, it could be the whole day. And another conversation that has come up from someone on the back team is to take a look at extra signage on Weller near Cobblestone, or at the corners, at the corner right now of School View and Weller. So while they stop on Weller coming onto School View, there is no stopping on School View right in that spot. So these are conversations that I intend to have.
And that's going to be a huge crossing area right there for the kids going to the elementary, and it's a blind spot.
It could be called a crosswalk.
I've almost been run over jogging there multiple times, so it's.
Well, when you talk to Len, can you talk to him about removing some of the trees or some of the, so that it is a little clearer?
I mean, during the winter's not bad, because there's no leaves on the trees and so forth, but during the spring and summer, it's really bad.
So, we own the property across the street of School View from the high school, which is the whole part from that corner over, so that is something I have to talk about with Dave Martin as well.
We own a portion of that, up to a certain number of feet, 10 feet, so it's not more than that, but.
Yes, we own that, we own that piece, because we didn't want driveways coming out of School View. So, absolutely, I know we already have cut back the trees on the sidewalk from School View, just to make it a safer sidewalk spot, but these are conversations that I have. So if you have more ideas, please let me know.
We could have, can people volunteer to be crossing guards?
No.
Cannot volunteer.
Cannot be.
The reserves.
The E and the reserves can, the auxiliary police could, the police that are on site could, I've seen that in other districts that I've been in, but a private citizen cannot direct traffic on the road.
If somebody wants to volunteer, they can become a reserve police officer.
That's agreed.
Right, we cannot direct it in any way, shape, or form.
But if somebody wants to, they can become a reserve police.
That would be wonderful.
Do you know what it takes to do that?
Talk to Joe Flynn.
Yeah.
Did you get a gun? No. They don't carry weapons.
I will answer that question.
Okay.
Okay.
Mike Felshaw might be a person to talk to too about the reserves.
And just for the public out there too, I mean, for two meetings, this board has gone back and forth, this has not been an easy decision in any way, shape, or form, and no one should think that it was made lightly at all, so, in all fairness, the board did wrestle with this.
I had parents approach me and ask how we can exclude certain sections to make them walk and other sections not, within that primary zone.
Because we're not doing a full radius, like a one mile, what we're doing is, we are looking at state regs accordingly and saying, what we are already doing on the west side of Main, we're now mirroring on the east side, so that according to regs, we're able to do, and not have that be part of the mile radius. And then the other thing is, if there's a footpath to use, then they can use that as well, and that's also part of state regs, which doesn't fall into that mile radius. So it's not a mile radius thing that we're actually doing, so it's a very.
School districts are not under any obligation to bus general education students at different grade levels between a mile, I think it's two miles and three miles, so we're not within any.
Two miles for elementary students.
I realize that, that we're not obligated to do such, but in fairness, how can you eliminate one piece and say, you have to walk?
You know, Mike, I just.
The parents are coming up to me, and of course, I live in that neighborhood, and how do you sit there and say, okay, these kids have to walk, but these kids, or they have to walk a distance but ride the bus, and these kids over here, that's within the same general vicinity, ride the bus, so.
Because you have to look at what you're able to do legally, which this, we are, and make up the budget. And it's an excellent point, absolutely, but we're not actually doing the mile radius thing and saying everyone within the mile radius has to walk. It is targeted based on, again, what the regs actually state. So if that helps you when people are asking, we can actually show you exactly where that is in the regs, if they have a question about that. And I know that's not the best answer, but it's the legal answer I can actually give.
Do we have, does Dave Martin, does he clean up the walkways in the wintertime? Are those, do we have?
That sidewalk. That sidewalk is a town sidewalk, it's not ours.
Is it cleaned up?
It is.
They do?
Yeah, it's plowed.
In addition to the transportation, are you guys ready for me to move on?
Yes.
Okay. In addition to the transportation, there were things that, again, we were going to do that we are not doing. We talked about some of the staff of things before, like buildings and grounds, which we plan to do or not. Supplies, we did reduce 10%. Field trips at the junior, senior high school, they're still having field trips, but they're not going to be funded through the district anymore, it'll be an alternate means of funding. Teacher conferences, there used to be teacher conferences other than BOCs, next year it'll be just through BOCs. Equipment, we will have $20,000 less in equipment purchases next year. Park exams, we are ramping up to meet the park exams when they do come. We had planned an additional $100,000 in the budget to meet that, we are not doing that. And also, security cameras. We had planned $100,000 for security cameras. Our security cameras are analog cameras, right now they are not the best for being able to see anything that's going on. They are connected to a digital playback device, but still, it's an analog signal coming in. That has been pulled from the budget, and we're hoping to put that into, if there is a capital project, to have that considered under there. Couple other things, and then I will wrap up. Next, the budget hearing is Monday, or, sorry, Tuesday, and it's right there, and why I'm saying Monday, I don't know. Tuesday, May 6th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., right here in the cafeteria. The budget vote, Tuesday, May 20th, from 9:00 to 9:00, in the foyer here. And again, just as a summary, the budget amount that you voted on was 26, $396, $480. To give everyone in the audience of where that stands, that is an increase of $676,000 over last year, or 2.62% increase. For taxpayers, there will be an increase of 1.78 over last year. The tax cap for us was the 1.78, we are not going over the tax cap limit. And that limit is with, with cost of living basically factored in. So basically, what they did is, they took a look at the Consumer Price Index, had the 1.46% up there, they gave us a cost of living adjustment, that got us to the 1.78. And just in conclusion, you know, budget processes are tough. There is no doubt about it, and everyone in this room is here because they're very passionate about what they do. I have talked to my counterparts in many other districts. I would say, as tough as it is, and I don't want to sound flippant, it's not meant that way, please do not take it that way in any way, shape, or form, I think we're in a good spot. I think we have done, the Board has done a wonderful job in trying to preserve as much as possible this year. I'm hearing cuts of 20, 30 in other districts. That is not the case here this year. There will never be a perfect budget unless we have unlimited funds of money. It's never going to happen. And every year, we will need to make tough choices. And every year, there will be someone who feels that they're slighted, and they are. There's no way of getting around it. There are tough choices that need to be made. But I would say, I think the pain of which we're feeling is less than a lot of other districts, and I do not mean, mean in any way, shape, or form to mitigate the pain that anyone's going through, because it is painful. But we are positioned, I believe, in a very good spot as we weather the storm. So, questions from the Board?
How much did we save with the kids walking?
About $97,000 between personnel and also the gas. It was a big, it was a big chunk of savings. We went through every route, and I give Rose a lot of credit at looking at that to see where we can combine routes, and so, yes. Other questions?
Maybe, could you make an announcement of, we have, I know your budget, but it's all goes together with May 20th as far as the vote goes? We have three candidates up for reelection possibly, and two more.
It is three spots which are up, and there are five candidates.
Okay.
For next year, correct.
Barb, do you mind speaking for a moment?
Yes, people have heard enough of me.
As a district board?
Sure. There are Mr. Breeden, Mr. Burns, and Mr. Campbell. There are five people running, and the lot draw this morning at 9:00, Gary Sam finished first, Mr. Breeden finished second, Mr. Burns finished third, Mr. Cerny finished fourth, and Mr. Campbell finished fifth. That's the order they'll be on when you see your ballot, that's the order they'll be in. And everywhere else I have...
Everything listed, we'll have it in that order.
Right, in that order.
Yeah, thanks Barb.
And this presentation, which you saw here, there will be the same presentation, but a much more abbreviated condensed, which we will do for any group who does want to hear it. So please, if you can think of any groups who want us to present to them, it will be a mix between the superintendent, myself, the Board President, presenting on this budget what you just saw here. We want to let people know as much as possible, not convince, to convince them to vote for it, that's not it, but just to let them know the details. People vote their mind, one way or the other. So if there are groups that you want us to speak before, please let us know.
I think you want to.
I am. Okay, and before everyone leaves, we want to let people know about this, because I know there's one person at the door, and this is just, okay, all right, don't want to force anyone to stay. So, on July 2nd, this, this conversation has come up before, and we like to let people know in advance of the veterans' tax exemption. This is something that the Governor passed into law at the very end of last year, effective for this year, for school boards to potentially vote on applying a tax credit for veterans. This is something, and you're going to hear some of my personal opinion again, one way or the other. This is a known situation for all school districts, period. It is something is previously has been offered at towns and municipalities, it is now for the first time been offered to school districts, and it is something that people are very passionate in one way or the other. And I don't envy the position this Board is actually in, but what we are actually looking at is, on July 2nd, having a presentation about the veterans' tax exemption to let people know about it. There's still a lot that is actually developing with the veterans' tax cap and all of that. And so while we're not going to get into details tonight, we just want to let people know right from the start, January 2nd prior to, or July 2nd, prior to the reorg meeting, from 5:30 to 6:40. 5:30 to 6:40, so please come. It affects every taxpayer, whether you're a veteran or not. So just to let people know.
Will you be giving that presentation?
I will be giving the presentation, yes. Correct.
Is someone from the county coming?
I'm going to ask someone to come from the county. If nothing else, I have a presentation from the county. I will tell you, as they've said, it is not a be-all, end-all presentation, because it's developing for them as time goes on. So I will present what we were actually presented as well.
We should be able to pull Fran in, because Fran sits, he's the head of the Commissioner on Veteran Affairs for Erie County. He lives in Eden.
Fran McLachlan?
Yeah, Fran McLachlan.
Fran McLachlan?
Yeah.
It's easy to know for me, remember?
He lives in Eden, he's in Eden, but he sits, he's the Commissioner for Erie County, reporting to Mark Polling Cars for Veterans Affairs.
Commissioner for Veterans Affairs.
That'd be awesome. Thank you for suggesting that.
And if you, if you'd like, I can talk to him, I see him almost daily.
Absolutely, thank you.
5:40 to, 5:30 to 6:40?
5:30 to 6:40.
And then, and then if he's able to do it, Mike, just give him my number and, or email. Thank you very much.
I think it's important too, on that public forum, that we are not supporting nor not supporting it. It is a public forum for us to present the information, because we honestly, in a public forum, can't take a position one way or the other. That'll be a position for the Board of Ed to take at a different meeting, or later that day, whatever the Board chooses to do. July 2nd is the reorg meeting, which is the first meeting of next year, or 14, 15. So that meeting has, Barb knows better than I do what happens on the reorg, but that's an awful lot of positions that get reorganized and placed on that night.
We would never be able to fit this in the reorg meeting, so that's why it's being done prior to.
Yep. And there's some legal questions about putting it into a Board meeting, which is why we're having the public forum prior. You think you're done?
Yes, I believe so.
All right, good job, thank you very much. All right. Let's start with the Eden Elementary digital sign. So I was informed by Paul Zittle last week that the monies have been, all, all the donations and monies have been procured for the elementary digital sign that goes on the front lawn. It is not replacing, replacing the brick structure at all, that I understand was built by a number of people, one of them being Mr. Stressing, but what it is replacing is the inside guts of the sign. So we've done an awful lot of work, there was also a committee that was involved in this. It actually started out with the, with the shared decision, the district's shared decision-making team a couple of years ago, and then it branched into another committee to actually see what could be done with it. I'd really, really like to thank the Chamber, as well as the Eden Community Foundation for the work that they've done on this, and all the people who have donated money. They raised approximately $17,000 for the sign. It will not be flashy, it is not full of color, it actually matches the architectural design of the elementary school of more of that Tudor. It is maroon and white, which is also nice. It lends itself towards some additional metalwork or aluminum, should our tech department students want to get involved, as they have with the boosters donated scoreboard. So that would be very nice, like a Raider or something that they might want to put on it. So we're really grateful to them. Mr. Martin, who's been working with the foundation, to speak with TOTH, which is the company that will be making or creating the sign, and it'll take approximately eight weeks for it to be here. Questions on that? I think everybody's seen, seen pictures of that. May 23rd is a full student day, I'd like to apologize to any students and staff that are here for that. I think we tried really hard not to have that happen, but honestly, that last snowfall day where all the government agencies in town started closing down, didn't leave us any choice as a district. And from what I can understand some from people that really did venture out on the roads in Eden that day, it was a good decision to close. I think, was it Lucinda that I was talking to? Lucinda, you and Kevin tried to get someplace and actually turned around and went back home. That news makes me feel better.
Did she turn around?
Yeah. To the four corners, wow. The reason it's a full day and not a half a day is because New York State Education Attendance Regulations state that you cannot have more than four half-days in a semester, and so that must be a full day, or we would have needed to turn some other day into a full day and make that one a half-day. Of course, we were hoping that it wouldn't occur at all. And that will go out in our newsletter and as reminders, as we do on Global Connect to Parents. The, I'm going to switch down just to number four for a minute on the budget outreach. Tom Ashley talked about that some, but we are putting out a request to any groups that are interested in Mike Burns, Tom, or myself coming out to talk and do this presentation as we did tonight. We will go to all of the buildings, so the faculty and staff can, if specific groups within buildings want to separate out, we're okay with that, PTA, Boy Scouts, VFW, American Legion, we don't care how many groups that we need to go to. The message is for us to get the budget news out. We cannot by law support it, we just simply give out the information, as Tom had stated. So I'm really glad you brought that up as well. And then I'd like to back up to number three, and, and ask if Jen Tylock or Jeff Servoni or both of you could come up and just talk about the Kenny Awards nomination. I think it's an awesome, awesome, Jen actually mentioned a little bit about it before, but in more specifics, what is it? And we've not, this is not the first time, so just talk to us about it.
I'll just give the basics. I called Jen today and asked her a little bit about the Kenny Awards. It's the equivalent of the Tony Awards for high schools, that's how she described it. Eden was nominated this year again, and they don't know what categories they're going to be nominated for, but it's an honor just that judges came out, watched our musical and said, "This is so good, and we believe you deserve a nomination." I'll let Jen talk a little bit about the history of it.
Yeah, it's a program that's run through Shades, and if you win the best show, you win a $5,000 prize for your program. But you can also win several head, or you can win best sets, you can win best choreography, you can win best car, you can win best actor, best actors, all of those are, the same ones that are included in the Tonys. It's a really great program, it's been around, I think, twenty years.
Yeah, about there. Lipkey, Lipkey Foundation, about there.
First year we entered and were accepted in was 2004, and we actually won. And so since then, we've been back in the competition and taken back in for, this is our fourth time.
Four times, yeah.
Yep, and this ties us with a lot of people's. So it's really a great opportunity for the kids, yeah.
Do you have to apply for that?
Yes.
So you have to bring them, you know, let them know that you're putting on a show and that they'll come out?
Yes, it's a, it's a three-page application. We have to go through a presentation at Shades for a panel of judges, then they decide who they want to go see. There's seven schools that were accepted this year, not just from our county, it's from surrounding counties as well. And then all of the judges, which are people from Shades, people from the theater community, musicians, some are not even, you know, well, there's one person that was a high school record too, as well in town. And they all have to come and see your show. So every single one of those judges show up, we have judges that are show up every single night, basically.
Nice.
Hope they have a 26.
Yeah, I think that's important to talk about the April 26th, too.
Yes, the 26th, which is this Saturday at 2:00 at the Smith Theater in Shades, which is a small theater, they have what they call the nomination ceremony, and that's when we go and we find out if we're one of the three or four people in getting the candidate. So our...
April, April 26th?
It's not open seating, though.
It's a small theater.
That one is not open seating, and it's limited.
It's dinner theater, so like 100 people maybe total can fit in there.
Yeah, we're limited to 30 people. So that obviously went out to the older kids first, and the directors.
They got a lot of response.
Yeah, but you know, kind of love.
Yeah, mine too.
And then, and we find out if we're nominated for best sets, if we're nominated for best production, if we're nominated for best lights, best costumes, best choreography, and the individual students also find out if they're nominated, because this is a great opportunity for individual students to be recognized from the several counties around. We've had kids nominated before, and we actually have students. That's it.
Hey.
The Boston Shore Award, which is basically the best up-and-coming performer. So we have a big history with the, with the organization. Now, on May 10th, at 3:00, 4:00, at 4:00 at Shades, we have the national awards ceremony, which is a presentation ceremony where our kids actually get to get up on the Shades stage, and they get to perform a portion of their, of some of their musical numbers. This is a good opportunity for our kids, because a lot of our kids don't ever get to go to shows like this, they don't get to go to Shades, they don't get to walk backstage. And trust me, they're fascinated when they walk backstage and see all the mechanics and the machinery. And then somebody's got $2 dollars along, and then we find out throughout that ceremony if we actually won anything.
And that one is open seating?
That one is open seating. Anybody can go to that, you can get tickets at Shades at the door. It's a great experience, I can't explain the enthusiasm in that room, with thousands of parents and musical kids and, and people watching, and the cheering that happens for each of the schools. Even if you don't win, like the crowdery is, is really a neat thing. So we've never not won anything, usually a production award every year because of our credit, special effects and sets and things like that. But like I said, the Crown Award was in 2004 when they actually won the whole thing. So it's a pretty cool experience, and anybody that can come see it should, so it really shows off the Kenny's role.
Sandy, I don't know if I can just thank the Board about the adventure. Sign me a gem, thanks Jen, congratulations.
Bye Jen.
You're done.
A couple weeks ago, we were fortunate to take a group of about 32 students on a van tour to New York City. It's a field trip, the Board approved, it's a four-day trip. Sarah Bogert does a phenomenal job, it's literally 6:00 in the morning till midnight.
You still have circles on your eyes.
Oh, I don't, all four days. What the kids get to experience, from clinics, from the different colleges, to the Lincoln Center, to the Radio City Music Hall, to meeting the Rockettes. City Music Hall, to meeting the Rockettes. Andrew Bazanik was with me, AJ was with me. This was actually part of my chaperone group, to see Times Square. Who else did we see, AJ?
Lincoln Center.
Lincoln Center, the Statue of Liberty, Ellis Island. It was four days of really good stuff for us and the students. So, I just want to thank the board.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, I do have a few more things, even though they're not up on the screen. My apologies. I'd like to thank Barb Tomasuo and David Keane for working with the Hamburg Sun on an excellent article for Raiders' Respond Day, which is May 16th this year. If you are up to it, please be here, take on a group if you need to. It's a most incredible day, and if you can't take on a group and you want to just come and watch what happens across the community, it truly is a one-of-a-kind. I have seen other districts try to replicate what Eden does, but they don't do it like we do it. We do it K-12. And you can get your car washed. Is that true this year, too, Lauren? Do you know? Is there going to be a car wash this year? Do you know?
There was before.
Yes? Yep. I got mine washed, I saw you, they did a great job. I'd also like to thank Lucinda Carsette and David Martin for last night. We hosted an emergency services planning meeting. David did not have any intention of wanting Lucinda to have cardiac arrest, but when the internet went down, right in the middle or the beginning, actually, wasn't it the beginning of the presentation, which needed a video, that was, that was, thank you. I appreciate everything that you did, Lucinda. And then there was a gentleman in the audience, Jeremy Conch, who actually lended his phone as a mobile device so that we could get on, so it was amazing. But this emergency services planning meeting was with the fire, the emergency, and the police agencies of Eden in getting ready for our emergency drill on May 28th. That emergency drill will replicate a lockdown situation. I use the word replicate because we really don't want our students to be afraid. That's what drills are for, but we want them to be prepared. And in addition to that, we need to have our employees and our parents and our community understand what their responsibilities are at the same time. If in fact, as one was used last night, if in fact, a lockdown scenario were to occur, where everybody's cellphones went off, calling friends, parents, whatever, in the middle of it, it could effectively shut down the towers of the phones and harm us from attempting to save a situation that could be of threat. So, I just wanted to thank them for, there were at least 65 people that were here for that presentation. Also, I have received a number of, I think, three or four emails from parents who are noticing that the Erie 1 BOCs and the Erie 2 BOCs calendars are not the same. Our Erie 2 BOCs calendar matches Chautauqua Cataragus,[1497.73]